We'll call the meeting to order. Tonight is Monday, June 25th. It's 7:07 PM. Our agenda includes the open forum, the superintendent's report. Discussion items include the 2018-19 budget approval, the strategic plan update, the Minnesota State High School League resolution, policy development first reading, policy 506 discipline, policy development second reading, 524 internet acceptable use, 806 crisis, and 807 health and safety. Item F, radio station license update. Item G, request of approval of deferred maintenance for Lenox Community Center. In addition will be item H, the agreement with the Minnesota Human Rights Commission, which was the subject of our pre-closed meeting with our attorney, Michelle Kenny, our consent agenda. And then the action agenda includes the budget approval, the Minnesota State High School resolution, the approval of employment contract, executive administrative assistant to the superintendent, approval of contract for student data coordinator, the policy development second reading of 524 internet acceptable use, 806 crisis, and 807 health and safety, approval and notification to the FCC for the radio station, approval of deferred maintenance for Lenox Community Center. Item H, motion to approve the agreement with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights. I did have to speak on the consent agenda. We do have an addendum, and it is item F for business. This will be included in the consent agenda and approved as such. And as per typical course, we do not discuss items on the consent agenda unless a board member wants to pull something out of consent agenda and put it on the regular agenda. So after that, we'll have communications and transmittals, and then adjournments. So do we have a motion?
I think the motion is to amend as you've suggested, but I don't think we need H as a discussion item. I think H is only an action item.
Okay. Thank you. So the motion by Nancy with the amendment and notification and a second?
Second.
Second by Jim Benneke. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
None. Okay, that carries 6-0. Now we are moving on to open forum, and there is no one here in the audience with us tonight, so we will pass on to the superintendent's report with Superintendent Osai.
Chair Waters, members of the board. This evening for my superintendent's report, I would like to just highlight a couple of items connected to our summer construction. One of the pieces that I would like to remind everyone of is that the district office will be moving on July 12th to our new location at 6311 Wayzata Boulevard. We are taking necessary steps to make sure that we have appropriate signage, and we've been working on communications over the past several months to make sure that people are aware of the move, but I wanted to just take this opportunity one more time, as we won't be meeting in July, to let everyone know that we'll be moving to our new location. And we're currently exploring different ways to bring the community together, just so that they're aware of where we are. And the great thing is that we're located right next to the ABE building. I also wanted to just make sure that everyone was aware of the summer construction project. So we are, the demolition, demolition, excuse me, has started. One of the pieces that we're really excited about is that each project is on schedule and on budget. So we're excited about that as the projects are moving forward. And as you remember, those projects are the air conditioning at the elementary sites, the secured entry way at Peter Hobart, and also those mock classrooms that are connected to the Next Century classrooms and some of the digital learning work that we're doing here in the district. So again, we're really excited about the work. We're excited about the fact that these projects are on time and on budget. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Yes, Nancy.
Esther, I just have a question. The district office is moving. Do your, do the phone numbers stay the same for the district office?
Yeah, so phone numbers stay the same. The only thing that is changing is the address. Yep, very question. Thank you for that. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. So the next item on our agenda is the 2018-2019 budget approval. And we had some information at our last meeting from Brooks Grossinger, and we walked through the budget. You all got another copy of the budget book. So this is our chance to ask any further questions or be ready to move ahead in our action items.
Anything I can review on the budget?
Yeah, Brooks, we talked about this last time, and then I'm looking at the summary page on the budget, which is, in my book, it's a page 13. And so my understanding is that the, it's tricky when we give raises and benefits that are larger than the increase we're getting from the state. So I understand that the deficit is about $900,000 in the budget this year, and that that, am I right? That's what's been taken out of the unassigned general fund balance to cover that deficit? Because that, I didn't do the math, but it looks to be about $900,000 less than it was last year.
The unassigned?
Yeah, the unassigned.
Yep, that's about $940,000. We use some of our assigned set-asides to cover some of that deficit spending, thereby reducing the assigned fund balance. Net overall, Fund I, about $900,000, correct?
We appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is the strategic plan update.
Chair Waters, members of the board, Director Sarah Thompson and I are extremely pleased to be before you this evening to provide a brief overview of our strategic planning process. As you know, as part of our strategic planning process, every year we come together with students, community, and staff to review our plan and really the progress that we're making towards accomplishing the goals of our strategic plan. So tonight, what we would like to do is provide you a brief overview of our accomplishments for this school year, recommendations that we received, not only from staff who've worked on each of the different strategic plan strategies, but also the community. And then lastly, wanted to talk about goals or result statements moving forward to next school year. It's impossible, I shouldn't say it's impossible, but we shouldn't ever start off by talking about our strategic plan or the direction of our organization without first acknowledging our mission. And our goal here in St. Louis Park is truly to make sure that each of our students actualize this mission. So when we go up, or when I go up to a student in the hallway and I ask them, are they attaining their highest level of achievement, or do they feel prepared to contribute to society? That they can say, yes, I feel prepared to contribute to society, and this is why, right? And they can list the different experiences they've had here in St. Louis Park. And we try to do that through providing students multiple pathways to excellence. And as you've seen throughout the course of this school year and different spotlights and presentations from our students, you've seen how those pathways have led our students to experiences that we believe are preparing them to be successful contributing members to society. As we think about the components of the strategic planning process, and I know that all of you know this, but it never hurts to have a good reminder of the different pieces that go into that. And at the core of there, at the top of that is our mission, which is the driving factor of any strategic plan, the mission outcomes, which are the outcomes that we as a district hold ourselves accountable to. And then the strategies. And here in St. Louis Park, we have four strategies. Strategy one being teaching and learning, strategy two. And I don't, I struggle with numbering them because the numbering doesn't give them any, one, any more significance or importance than the other. But strategy two, the way that we currently have it listed, is systems and structures. Strategy three is community collaboration, and strategy four is facilities. And those strategies, through the work of those strategies, really allow us to move the work of our strategic plan forward. And what you'll also see there is our core values, which are the, I believe, the foundation, the foundation that upholds who we are as employees and community members and students, parents, and staff in this organization to move the work of the mission forward. I don't know if it's one of my favorite, but one of the pieces that I often talk about around strategic planning are delimiters, you know, not necessarily allowing past practice to influence the consideration of new ideas. And that's something that I believe, as we talk a little bit more this evening, you'll see some of that coming out through our conversation. So keep going. Sarah, if you would be willing to introduce strategy one?
Sure. I'm gonna hop into strategy one. So as Esther says, strategy one is teaching and learning is our short version of it. You can read on the screen the long definition of strategy one. And so what we did this year in strategy one, you can see here, we had some great accomplishments. So the result was, we will implement a plan to ensure our curriculum, learning, and teaching practices are culturally relevant. And so that was the primary task. And what we did this year was a lot of different, really rich professional development with our teachers around culturally relevant teaching, some wonderful work in our equity coaching and our equity programs, some great collaborations with our teachers on special assignment. But what we learned is that there's more work to be done. And so we have crafted a plan, we've done a lot of work, but what we're proposing for next year is that we will implement a plan to ensure that all of our practices are culturally relevant. So while there's been a great body of work done, there's more work for us to do here so that we can, as Esther said, really actualize our mission. Should I do this one?
I can step in. And as we, as we're going through these strategies and going through the results connected to each strategy, I think it's also important to note that what you see on the screen in front of you, particularly as it relates to recommendations, this is a high-level overview. This doesn't, this doesn't include all of the recommendation or all of the accomplishments that occur, but what we really wanted to do this evening is just provide you with an overview so that you understand the impetus for some of the proposed results for the upcoming school year. The next strategy connected, I'm sorry, the next result connected to strategy one was that we will update student discipline process to reflect the multi-tiered system of support. And I will say this year, we learned a lot around the work that is required to truly move the needle in this area. We piloted and explored a couple of different strategies at different sites, and I believe the work that we did around exploration is gonna really help to drive our work moving forward next school year. So what you'll expect is that the actual result statement will stay the same because we learned that there's much more work to do in this area around getting alignment through the different processes and forms that we use to modify student behavior and to support students here in our schools. And feel free to ask questions at any point. I know that we're kind of flying through this, so if there are specific questions that you have, don't hesitate to ask. Strategy two, which, as I mentioned before, is about systems and structures, and we really believe that under this strategy, we're able to help our employees achieve our mission and mission outcomes. One of the results under this strategy was around creating a systemic process to recruit and retain racially diverse employees to support our core values and achieve our mission. And in front of you, you'll see that we've broadened our recruitment plan, that we've created training around hiring of staff to make sure that, you know, we're really trying to examine the implicit bias that sometimes shows up in those settings. And we also intentionally created affinity spaces for staff to come together and support one another, but more importantly, talk about the things that they would want and need to feel accepted here in the St. Louis Park Public School District. In addition to that, so many of the recommendations that we had have really helped to shape the proposed result for next school year, as you'll see listed there. And the proposed result for next school year is to enhance systems and structures, to help employees be effective and accountable for their work to support our core values and achieve our mission.
I'll hop into this one. So another area we looked at this year was developing a true financial planning timeline and process to align our resources with our mission and our strategic plan strategies. We've made some accomplishments. We have a budget calendar, we have a process that we started to implement this year. We did a lot of digging deep as directors who have budget managers to really see, where are we spending our money? Is it truly aligned to our mission? And how can we change it? How can we be even better fiscal stewards of the resources? So we're looking at that. The recommendations came back that we need to dig a little deeper. We need to formalize this process a little bit more. We need to do some more prioritization. But what's most important here is you're gonna see that the box for next year is blank. We're not quite sure where we're taking this work yet. And so we're gonna do some more work over the summer. We're gonna work with our new director of financial services and talk about, how do we wanna move this work forward? What does this look like for 2018, 2019? How can we do some more prioritization so that we're in alignment with our mission? And so that's to be determined, and so we left it open tonight, knowing that we'll be back in front of you to talk more about the strategic plan soon.
And if I could add, I think it's also important to note that while we have, while we've listed several results that direct the work that we're doing, that these results don't necessarily encompass all of the things that we do on a daily basis here in St. Louis Park. So while there are certain things that we're listing and we're focusing on, there's, you know, a whole host of other items that we're continually doing every single day to make sure that we're helping our students actualize our mission. Strategy three is around collaborating with our diverse communities in a very authentic and systemic manner to build collective ownership and accountability. And this school year, we had two results, result statements under this strategy. And the first one was to measure community understanding of the mission and core values. And as a part of this work, we started and we focused on staff, because what we recognized is that prior to this year, we didn't have a systemic way of really measuring what our staff's understanding of our mission and core values were. So we have a baseline now and a strategy to survey and assess staff annually. And as we move forward into next year, you'll see that result statement is now tied to students, parents, and guardians, because as we think about community, that involves students, staff, parents as well. So we wanna figure out strategic ways to assess students and parents and guardians' understanding of our mission and core values.
And also under strategy three, we said that we wanted to develop a systemic process for seeking multiple perspectives. And so this is kind of everywhere and all the time. Parents in the district know that we ask a lot of questions, we have a lot of surveys, we ask a lot of input. But are we getting truly a multiple perspective from all of our families in our school community? And so we looked at a lot of different things this year. How are other districts doing this? What are some best practices? We gathered data across the board in how we seek multiple perspectives at this time. We surveyed schools, we surveyed sites and programs. We looked really deeply into our translation. What are we translating? How are we translating? And is it effective? Is it the right way to do it? And so we developed a translations plan that we will be implementing this coming year. But we need to go deeper, like if you're hearing a common theme from me tonight. We scratched the surface, we got some really good information, but now we need to take it deeper, and we need to really implement some processes that we found this year and some systems that we developed, so that we truly can make sure we're hearing from all of our stakeholders.
And Sarah, if I could, if I could add to this piece, as part of, so earlier this school year, the board, you all approved a letter for us to submit to the West Metro Education Program to withdraw our membership. And one of the recommendations that you see up there is to collaborate with surrounding districts on effective practices to engage communities. And one of the things we're gonna be looking at through our work of Reimagine Minnesota is really, how can we partner? And specifically in this instance, we're looking at, how can we partner with Minneapolis Public Schools, as they have a very robust program, to figure out how some of those strategies can help inform the way that we are engaging families? Specifically, what that looks like is not always expecting families to come to us, right? And being strategic about, how do we go to the families to make sure that we're able to meet their needs in an environment that is comfortable and conducive to being in relationship with one another? So we're excited about what the future looks like from this strategy as well.
And then strategy four is all about facilities. And we were very pleased this year to implement our plans for facility improvements. We're doing a lot of work on this topic. We did a lot of communications. And there's, again, more work to be done. So we're gonna, we're gonna roll this forward on implementing plans for facility improvements because there's a lot of work to be done. So $100.9 million of construction doesn't happen in a year. Tom Bravo, I'm not sure, could sit upright if we did that to him. So we've got, we've got a ways to go on this, but there's just really good work going forward on this one.
And if I could, I'm sorry, Sarah's probably looking at me like, geez, he keeps wanting to add stuff. This is not what we agreed to. But I think that I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity. So the only reason that we have the opportunity to stand before you and talk about 44 different project teams and the work that we're doing in this area is because of the commitment of our community and the decision that they made earlier this fall to approve our $100.9 million bond referendum. So as we stand here with great excitement and urgency around completing these projects, we also stand here with a great deal of gratitude to even be able to have the conversation and work to improve our facilities. I promise y'all I want to.
No, I'm gonna hop on. I'm gonna hop right up back on top of that. And I wanna compliment the board and the strategic plan core team, because the fact that we have facilities as a strategy strand in our strategic plan is unique. And it was, at the time, very unheard of, and it was a little bit of a risk that we took. And I think that in large part, that's why we were so successful with our referendum, is that it truly was a strategic priority for our school district. It blended with all of our strategic plan's strategies, and it really was foremost at the front of our work. And so it's a tribute to the board, the core planning team, and as Esther said, the whole community, because we really came together around this work. And then, as we said, we were successful on Election Day. So we're also really excited, because this is one result that we can say is fully operational. So this one is coming off the list. We've achieved this result. There is more work to do, however, so we'll talk a little bit about that next.
So as we, as we move into next school year, as we went through each of the results from this school year, we highlighted accomplishments, we highlighted recommendations, and those accomplishments and recommendations really drive our result statements for next school year. So the proposed result statements in front of you really encompass the work of our staff who've done a tremendous job this year leading these results and moving the work forward. And it also encompasses the feedback from our community through the core planning process. One of the pieces that I would like to mention is that this school year, we learned that Susan Hints, who's been our longtime facilitator of our core planning process, was retiring. And as part of that, we look at it as, even as we think about strategic delimiters, right? Not to allow past practice to stand in the way of the consideration of new ideas. And as we move forward, we really wanna center student voice in the process. So as we move forward over the next couple of years, we're gonna be looking to elevate and really center students in the core planning process, ultimately getting to a place where students are facilitating the process for the staff, parents, and community who participate. Because what we believe is that if we are gonna create an environment where students actualize the mission, that their voice in developing the process to get them there is gonna be critical. Does you wanna add anything to this, Sarah?
No, we're really excited about, as we move this work forward. You can see that we've, we've got some lofty goals for what we wanna achieve in the 2018-19 school year, but also some really exciting work and some work that our community has been asking for. Strategy four is a great example. We will be starting a school start and end time study that will impact transportation in the coming year and anticipate that that will roll out then in fall of 2019. So that's important work, and all of the work we're doing is super important, and this really shows the depth and the breadth of what we'll be looking at next year.
Any questions for us?
Yeah, Sarah, can you just clarify what I, what you were saying about what will roll out in 2019? I understand for 2018, 2019, we're gonna have a study of school start and end times, and we'll look at busing and all. Is your, were you saying that if there's a change to be suggested, and we don't know that yet because we haven't done the study?
Correct.
But if that were to be the case, that would roll out in 2019? Or that we have, we hope to know what we're recommending in 2019? Where, I didn't get that.
Yep, it could go either way, Nancy and members of the board. It really, you know, we don't know the study till we do the study, first of all. So that's, you know, cart before the horse in some ways. But what's going to be important is fall of 2019 is when Park Spanish Emergent School will be at Cedar Manor. And so that's a natural place where our bus routes are going to have to shift. And so it, it will impact start times in some way, because we'll just need to move our students differently around the district. And so we anticipate that that could be the timeframe of how it goes, but we don't know that as of yet because we haven't done the study. But we do know that 2018, 2019 is when we really need to dig in deep and do that work.
I'm really grateful for this overview. It is a really good strategic planning process. We have an excellent strategic plan. And just to remind the community, when we were searching for a new superintendent, one of our requirements was, you would take our existing plan and keep working with it. Yes, we understand we need to tweak along the way. Any strategic plan would require that. But as a community, we didn't wanna start over. We wanted to continue this work. And Anne and I are both on the core team. Jim and Ken have been on action teams, so we have a lot of time invested in this, and we are seeing good results from this process. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the Minnesota State High School League resolution for 2018-19 that is being presented by Cindy Bennett.
Thank you, Chair Waters. This is the annual Minnesota State High School League resolution that comes before the board. It's a couple parts. The board was asked to review the, I believe it's "Why We Play" video, and so then if we can just get an affirmation that that's been done, and if not, please do it as soon as possible. And then we will submit the annual renewal to the Minnesota State High School League. I've consulted with Andy Ewald. On the back of the application, there's a few slots for names, who's responsible for representing the board, which we still continue to Ken Morrison unless he lets us know differently. And Andy Ewald has let me know what staff members are the appropriate people to put in those spots. So it'll be coming for you in the action agenda for your signature as well.
Cindy, thank you. And one thing I do wanna highlight about that video, which I appreciate taking time to look at every year, they talk a lot about the difference between a transactional coach that is really focused on winning and losing and a, what's the word, transformational coach. How do you make a group of people work together as a real team? And a lot of the coaches that they interviewed talk about family. And I know that Ben Wolf had a quote that I really liked when he was putting the football team together, and he said, "It's family. Forget about me, I love you." Right? That's the acronym for family. And that's just one example of our programming that has a coach that does that. But I have kids who've been on teams. All of the coaches that we've come across do this, and I hope that that is the experience of all of our teams, but I know it is something fostered as being part of a children-first community, that we're caring about the relationships, not the fact that we won football at state, although we got to go to another step of the journey.
And that's a good, important part, is that all of our programs, and I think Andy's making a good, make sure that it occurs that the kids are learning things in their, it's not all about the winning. It's about participating and making sure you're having a good time with it. And you're right, we were able to accomplish some things that hadn't been accomplished here before this last year, and we're gonna do even much better things, but still keeping that core value of kids come first and have fun comes first, instead of the win. So. So, it's a good thing.
Ken, are you willing to stay on the, to be listed here?
I am willing to stay on the, be listed on there for Amplinote.
Very good. Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is policy development, first reading policies 506, discipline. And this was in our email packet early. We've done a lot of work related to that this year. Mary Tombeck and I participated in some meetings prior to getting to this point. Tammy Reynolds, Carrie Schreetering, and Lauren Buxton have led this work under the direction of Superintendent O'Sai. So, we've made tremendous progress, and we still have more work to do. Is there anything else you'd like to add, Tammy or Aston? As people read the policy, did they have anything that they wanted to be called out or highlighted?
I didn't have anything in the policy, per se. And I know that the, attached to that is our grid of procedures that is put together by the administration that we get a chance to look at. What I did wanna say is I think, I think it's, it's important to have a discipline policy, but I think it's as important to have supportive policies. We'd like to, you know, be, have the relationships with our students and management in our classrooms that you don't need to get to the discipline stage because you're able to intervene and have a relationship that doesn't get you there, where students are engaged in learning and, and we're sensitive to whatever other traumas are going on in their lives, and we can manage it in a different way. And my hope is that we are gonna continue to work on those methodologies as well as having our, kind of what I view as the backup discipline policy, the, the place you would rather not get to if everything else is working right.
I'd like to echo what Nancy was saying in that some of our training that we had a couple of weeks ago and conversations that we have with equity coaches highlighted some of those activities that they did in the classroom, of which brings me to the thought of maybe we could have our equity coaches take a look at the process or the procedures of this disciplines to make sure that we are addressing all of our kids' needs. So, I would like to put that as a action.
I would just like to ask permission from the board. I just received today from MSBA the 2017 legislative updates. I have not had a chance to see if any of the policies that we're looking at tonight are recommended for changes. So, if this one is on there, then I'll, I'll make those edits for second reading, if that's okay?
Thank you, Cindy. That would be really helpful. Anyone else on this one? Okay, moving along to policy development, second reading, 524 Internet Acceptable Use, 806 Crisis, and 807 Health and Safety. We did have a good discussion last time and some language discussion. Is there anything else that people have? Cindy, yeah?
In front of you is revised procedure for 524. The biggest change on the last page has been totally stricken. At cabinet this morning, folks were talking about, do we need this? Do we don't need this? Is it appropriate? So, that last page is totally stricken. And then, if I could just add, we're not there yet, but 806 and 807, Mr. Bravo had taken these two policies to IEA, our consultant with the district. And he, I believe that he is in the process of trying to revise or write some new procedures. So, you do not have procedures in front of you for those. Those will be taken care of by the administration, and then when we get them, we'll bring them to you for, for your information.
Any other questions or input? All right, hearing none. We're gonna move on to the radio station license update, and we will be hearing from Tom Marble, Director of Information Services. And this is second or third time as more and more information has come forward about the best recommendation and action to take. So, thank you very much, Tom, for your input.
Sure. Really no presentation this evening. It's just further information that you've been provided within your packets and other discussions that we've had throughout the spring about the future operations, recommendations that, that I'm coming forth with tonight with conversations with people in the field and also our, the legal representation that helps us with some FCC filings and things along this, along that line, that this is the recommendation that I'm coming forward with to have our legal representation write a letter and basically say that we're going to cease operation. So, I'm here really to answer any further questions that you may have around this subject. So.
Tom, just to, kind of refresh for me and anybody watching at home, we've got this radio station that has a very limited range of broadcast. We, as a school district, have not been using it. Our students have not been using it for years. We've got some li, potential liability and some costs holding on to it. And the recommendation, after having checked into it, is to, to let it go, as it were. And that's what you're here to recommend that we do.
Correct.
If I remember correctly, we were thinking about the University of Minnesota was going to take over because they're kinda using it at odd hours.
We, we've had a timeshare agreement with them since, I believe, 1999. We currently, the timeshare agreement basically says when we're not in school, when school's not in session, they operate. And so, right now, we're, we're, they're, they're broadcasting, and we are not. So, we figured this, this summer would be a good time for us to cease. If we cease, then our timeshare agreement with them ceases as well. I've met with them. They don't need it. They're, they're well aware of that we're considering this, so.
So, they didn't have an interest in purchasing it?
It, it's very complicated in that matter. They really can't.
And I think that's what you told us. We'd, you, you had explored whether this had any marketable value, and the answer was yeah, really not.
Yeah. Very limited. Very, very limited.
This seems like the, the best, most reasonable solution. It's prudent, so, thank you.
I think, Anne, you were telling me that we're in the digital age, not the radio age.
Tom, thank you so much for your time and attention on this. We appreciate it.
Yep.
All right. The next item is with Mr. Tom Bravo, request of approval of deferred maintenance for Lenox.
Yes, thank you, Chair Waters and Superintendent School Board. Two weeks ago, I came over here to ask for the deferred maintenance for the elementary schools because it was critical to get them started, get them started and end it on time in August. I'm happy to tell you that they, we have started and it's moving along. So, this is the last deferred maintenance project that we promised the district when we, when the referendum passed, that we were gonna look at Lenox. And so, this one is to take care of all the restrooms, to make them ADA, to upgrade them all, to finish up the classrooms with, Tom, last year put Wi-Fi in them, and now we're just gonna upgrade the classrooms, but furniture, flooring, things like that. And then, we're gonna also look at the lower level of, of the, what they call the fireplace room, to upgrade that. And then, we're pretty much there until T+ moves over when we start remodeling on, on the second floor. So, all the numbers came in. We, again, using Carl Sanderson as a construction manager and using the joint powers agreement, we're under by about $380,000. So, we would like to get your approval to get a start on that project. It, it will not be completed by the time school starts, but it doesn't have to be because we know that there's some other programs that are, that will start community ed programs, but they won't, we won't impact them.
And what's the timeline for Transition Plus to move over to Lenox?
I will, in August, come to you with the bids on those. And then, that will happen through the fall and winter because we have to resurface the parking lot and make it bigger. Because of the other lease program that's over there, the requirement is that we have to, our parking lot has to go from 59 to 88, which we can do by making modifications. So, that will come in August, and we will start construction in September, the parking lot, September, and be completed by, right after Thanksgiving.
And just because I know this came up at a CAG meeting, that move is intended to be permanent?
That move is permanent now because we took some of the monies that we were gonna do over at Central, and we transferred them over, and it's a lot cheaper to do it this way than to move them again.
And, Tom, is the, is the work we're doing at Lenox this summer gonna have any impact on the Lenox programming for the summer?
No, it will not. We, we worked with Linda and Lisa Green, and we, we worked around all those.
Tom, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Then briefly, item H is, this will be in our action agenda, the agreement with the Minnesota Human Rights Commission. That was the subject of our pre-meeting earlier tonight. Now, the next item is our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve our amended consent agenda? Moved by Nancy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim Benneke. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 6-0. Now, we are moving on to our action agenda. 2018-2019 budget approval. It is recommended that the school board approve the 2018-2019 budget as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Ken Morrison. Is there a second? Second by Nancy Gores. Any discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 6-0. Next item, the Minnesota State High School Resolution. It is recommended that the school board approve the Minnesota State High School Resolution for 2018-2019 as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Ken Morrison. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim Benneke. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That carries 6-0. Next item, approval of employment contract executive administrative assistant to the superintendent, 2018 through 2020. It is recommended that the school board approve the employee agreement between Independent School District Number 283 and the executive administrative assistant to the superintendent, Cynthia Benefit, excuse me, Cynthia Bennett, for the 2018-2020 school years as presented. Is there anything else we should know about that?
Just Chair, members of the board, Superintendent, just as a reminder, at our last board meeting, we approved contracts for the supervisor-manager group and the professional play group. This contract parallels the, those contracts. So, this is kind of a me-too to, to those agreements.
All right. Is there a motion? Moved by Anne Casey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ken Morrison. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 6-0. Next item, approval of contract for student data coordinator, 2017 through 2019. It is recommended that the school board approve the employee agreement between Independent School District Number 283 and the district student data coordinator, Linda Stanley, for the 2017-2019 school years as presented. Rick, is there anything we should know about this contract?
Again, again, Chair, members of the board, Superintendent, this contract is a little different in that a while ago, it was pulled out of the clerical contract. It was put into a confidential unit. Things were done to this differently than other groups. It most similarly parallels the CAPS contract. And when Linda Stanley, shall she ever leave us? We would probably re-study the job and decide if it's a professional employee group or a CAPS group, and then it would be posted in that manner. This contract is most similar to the treatment that was provided for other clerical CAPS employees.
Very good. All right. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Nancy. Is there a second? Second by Anne Casey. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries 6-0. Next, the policy development second readings of 524 Internet Acceptable Use, 806 Crisis, and 807 Health and Safety. It is recommended that the school board approve policies 524 Internet Acceptable Use, 806 Crisis, and 807 Health and Safety as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Anne Casey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim Benneke. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that carries 6-0. Next item, approval of notification to FCC for the radio station. It is recommended that the school board approve the notification to cease operations through Womble, Bond, and Dickinson for the radio station KDXL as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Nancy. Is there a second? Second by Anne Casey. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 6-0. Next item, approval of deferred maintenance for Lenox Community Center. It is recommended that the school board approve the additional deferred maintenance for Lenox Community Center as presented. Is there a motion?
So.
Moved by Jim Benneke. Is there a second? Second by Nancy Gores. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 6-0. Next item is a motion to approve the agreement with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights as per our closed meeting discussion earlier this evening. Is there a motion? Moved by Ken. Is there a second? Second by Nancy Gores. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 6-0. Finally, communications and transmittals.
Aye.
Yeah, we can be efficient here. All right, they're hearing no communications. You do have one?
Well, we are, we are heading into the summer, so typically it's our tradition to ask what people think they're gonna be reading this summer around the, around the board and around the cabinet. So, I know you're all scrambling because I, I looked it up at like the beginning of the meeting. And I don't remember the book, Aston, that, that, maybe when it gets to you, in addition to whatever you're reading, you can talk about the book that, that was part of the professional development because I'm also reading that one. I just don't remember the name of it. But I have fallen, I'm reading, you know, I've read all the Harry Potter. I'm not meaning to steal your thunder there, Karen, but J.K. Rowling's, under the pseudonym Robert Galberath, writes, writes a series of mysteries with her, her private eye detective, I don't know how you say it in the British word, Cormoran Strike, Sebby Strike. And I've read the first two. I'm going to read the third one called Career of Evil because I just learned that she's finished the fourth one. So, I've gotta get ready for the, for the new one to come out. I don't want to always be caught with nothing else to read in the next of the series, so I wait.
I haven't thought about it. I'll do it next time.
Okay.
Well, in addition, I'll be reading a lot of journal articles as I'm working on trying to complete my, my dissertation. And in addition to that, the, I think the book that Vice Chair Gore's referenced was Zaretta Hammond's Culturally Relevant Teaching in the Brain, which all of our board members have a copy of, and I hope that they add to their summer reading list.
That, that's Ken's. That's all of ours. So, I do have a tradition of rereading Harry Potter every summer, and I'm through the middle of Harry Potter II. I'm not reading the tattered originals that are in the family. There's a new illustrated edition, so that's what I'm reading this time. And I'm also reading a professional development book and a lot of emails related to the other work I do on behalf of the board for WMEP. Just gonna say, it's a lot of emails. Okay, Jim, what are you reading?
Well, if everyone finishes their Harry Potter books, my daughter recommended another great fantasy, The Book of Lost Things. And someone also gave me a book recently. It's called- It's called I Know Why the Cage Bird Sings. I guess it's a, I don't think it's a really new book. It's autobiography of Maya Angelou, her early years, and she examined some race relationship issues along with the autobiography.
I have a leaning tower on my nightstand. But what I'm, what I'm thinking is at the top right now is a book called, I think I'm going to need the title right, New England Bound, and it's about the history of slavery in New England, which we don't often think about. It harkens back to my time as a grad student in, in New England history. So that is sort of academic, but right at the top of my list.
I think what happened last year was right before summer, Frank DeFord died, who's a sports writer, so my recommendation was these sports-related writings that he had. So right before summer this year, Tom Wolfe passed away. So I'm like, I have to request The Right Stuff. I've never read The Right Stuff. So I have that on request from the library, and I think I've also said this before, I'm cheap, so I wait for the free thing to show up. So I will hopefully be reading The Right Stuff. If not this summer, then whenever it shows up, so.
And cabinets, Cindy?
I'm well-versed in children's books and lullabies and poems with my three-year-old grandson.
I'm joining the rest of you in reading Zaretta Hammond's book and, for a little fun, some travel books.
Well, I just happen to have my Kindle right here. And in addition to the light breezy books that I read while I'm on the elliptical at LA Fitness, I actually have a recommendation from my colleague, Prachi. It's called The History of White People. I've downloaded a sample, and I've read that, and I will now download the whole rest of the book.
And I, much like Cindy, spend an awful lot of time in the children's book aisles. So currently, we are knee-deep in chapter books. Right now, it's the Magic Tree House, so having a lot of fun with that one. And on my nightstand is Thrive from Arianna Huffington, from the Huffington Post. So she's on the top of the pile right now, much like Anne's.
So I, oop, I have two. One, I'm starting, after a visit to Key West and Ernest Hemingway's house, I'm going to read Farewell to Arms this summer. And if I can get to it later on, there's a book, Gunflint Burning, and it was about the big fire in the Bonde Rogers canoe area.
I'll throw in one, I'll throw in one last bonus. I've had one sitting on my nightstand forever, and I got to open it up. It's called Killers of the Flower Moon. It's about the Osage Indians and the oil boom of the oil and the rise of the FBI. So it sounds like a really interesting book if I ever get around to reading it.
Very good. Because reading is a key thing that we do, not just our students, all of us. So thank you, everybody. And now I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Nancy, is there a second? Second by Ken. All those in favor, say aye. That carries 6-0 at eight o'clock on the dot.